Yeah, straight up seven.
Good evening, Commission, Dixon County meeting for March twentieth, twenty twenty five will now start. First off, roll call.
Commissioner Fink. Commissioner Griffiths.
Here.
Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Commissioner Schneider.
Here.
Commissioner Volkman.
Here.
Commissioner Headstrom.
Here.
Counting four. Okay. Now we'll move on to approve approval of the minutes from our last meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty five. Is there any amendments that would like to be added made to the ten minutes of last month?
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove the minutes of February twentieth, twenty twenty five as written.
I'll second. The movement's second to approve the minutes last meeting, uh, February twentieth. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Hope those same sign, motion passed. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is commission reorganization. I'll let you know, Chair, Vice Chair and Secretaries.
The, the commission will nominate and vote for a member to function as Chair and a second to function as Vice Chair for the next twelve months, beginning in April. Staff typically functions as commission secretary.
Right over to you, Vice. I don't want to stand here.
I have a pointed question. Who is our Vice Chair?
I don't know.
It was.
Was that passing?
It was.
It was.
I'd like to make, make a motion then that we retain our current Chair and add Mr. Fink as Vice Chair. I'm the second to motion.
Okay. It's been moving the second into remain, retain current Chairman and add Kelly Fink as Vice Chair, as Vice Chairman. Let me do this, let me just throw it out.
Two of them.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Hope those same sign, motion passed.
Okay. Next order of business is the Commissioner training. Jim Cowp is prepared a two-section workshop for the commissioners on planning and zoning issues and the function and the role of the commission that he's here. I'll let him kind of give his little biography and we can get started.
This issue with the word trainer. I call it trainer.
Okay.
This is a fun exercise.
It's fun.
Listen, I appreciate it. I've heard out like this on a day like this when there's basketball to be played, which no one's had to talk about. Of course, it's turned off. And not basketball, but, uh, bottom work and field work, which is something else I need to be doing. Under Peake, I'm a recently retired attorney. I grew up in Smith County, a farm, we farm, Smith County, sixth generation. Five previous generations were wheat farmers. And I'm the, I don't know what the right term is, but I, I broke the, broke the lineage. Okay, so going off to school and never going back to the farm. For a number of years, I worked for the League of Kansas Municipalities, which is a counterpart to the Kansas Association of Counties. I was also, I was, I was general counsel for the League for a number of years. It was back in nineteen ninety before some of us were born. And, and then I was special counsel to the Association of Counties for a while. And the reason I mention the network is one of the major projects I worked on when I was with the League and it was a multi-year project was to do a re, what's called a reconnotation or rewrite of the enabling legislation under which citizen counties plan and zone. Uh, it was the first time in, I think, I've told, I think in forty years or so that there'd been an effort to bring the, the statutory law up to date to incorporate court decisions and good kind of best practices from around the country, of which Kansas, of course, doesn't accept too many of the best practices, but, but a handful we got into, into the legislature. Anyway, that was a big project. After I was with the League, I went in private practice and working almost exclusively with cities and counties around the state. In fact, one of the first projects I had, and this will be, I'm being quick, this is a quick. It's a, it's a wonderful story, a wonderful life history. I've got, you know, one of the first projects I had, first, uh, piece of business I had when I came out of the, uh, of the League and went in private practice, a dear friend of mine and a friend of Doug, was a city attorney at Abilene and wherever else he was, I have to say, Stan Martin, I don't know.
Yep.
You all, okay, a great guy, great guy. In fact, stand I twenty-five, twenty-six years ago this month. Think about him often, he's a really, really good man. He was a partner of mine. Yes. And I've been talking through, through Stan, but I don't want to trouble him that too much, so I'll betray myself here. But Stan is a good man, good guy, a great family. But he hired me, the city, through Stan hired me to prepare a set of land use regulations for City of Abilene, Chapman, Manchester, Solomon, Harrington, uh, all, all the incorporated towns in, in the county. And also the work, I think Stan's at the front end of it, worked with the county. So we had some kind of a, a uniform set of regulations or relatively uniform across the county, easy to administer. And it was for Stan's convenience, but also I think for the public, okay? It was a good idea. And got that adopted and, and the cities entered into interlocal agreements with the county to regulate urban, I'm not sure what they call it, urban growth areas or something, fringe areas around the city, where there'd be joint city-county regulations of, of the land use, by, around the city of Abilene in particular. I don't know that all the cities adopt those interlocal agreements. At the next session, next month, we'll talk a little bit about interlocal cooperation. It's not dead in the water, but it's, it's under attack and, and I, I don't know the, I don't know the story behind how the interlocal agreements that were put together back in the nineties between the cities and the county fell apart. But it, it lasted for a few years and, and then ended, I think there was probably just a change in the cast of characters of decision, decision makers. So, and I mean, not being judgmental about it, there's been other interlocal agreements I've drafted that, you know, did not survive for a few years, you know? But anyway, um, I've also, I've, I've sat where you guys are sitting. I was a planning commissioner for, back in the nineteen nineties, Cape Cod and Shawnee County had a metropolitan joint body, uh, Metropolitan Planning Commission. I was an appointee of the mayor and served on that body for a couple of terms. And then the city and the county split because of some very fundamental disagreements about how land use should be approached. And so you need Shawnee County, you know, it's kind of a common story. But anyway, they split, they divorced. And simultaneously, I happened to move out of the city and did the unincorporated part of Shawnee County. And so I became the first Shawnee County Planning Commission Chair. This is back in around the two thousand or so. I'll tell you a quick story about that in a moment, because I know it's enticing, it's exciting stuff. But anyway, I was on the planning commission there as the county planning commission. And right now I'm back on the city planning commission. So I don't know what the hell I'm doing, you know? I've got about twenty years all put together, strung together being of the planning commissions, three different planning commissions. And you think I've learned something, but, um, anyway. Call these things workshops as opposed to training exercises. But we did a workshop and really would like to have some dialogue. We've got two sessions, if you guys want me to come back next month. So we're going to have some time for, have some dialogue, okay? And I say that so you hold me to it because I have a tendency to talk too much, okay? It'd use up all the, all the oxygen in the room. So, and questions as it goes along, I expect you to raise those questions with me, okay? If something doesn't sound right, you know, it's probably the right, you know, and then you talk about it. Uh, but since I'm retired, I haven't done quite as many of these workshops, but I used to do three or four of them a year around the state. And I have done cities and counties all around the state of Kansas over the last, or less, well, ever since I went into private practice thirty-some years ago. So anyway, that's, that's my story. Let me tell you what I tried to do, let you have any questions about that, okay? If you want a challenge, that I've actually lived on a wheat farm and does that? The topics that want to cover tonight, Tim, I got a little two-page.
Yeah.
Thing, did they get that?
Yeah, I gave, they've got that and the whole document.
Yeah, yeah. I, if you remember getting the two-page summary, let's say, what I'm going to cover tonight is really everything is covered on the first page, pages one through five. And to me, everything's important, I'm not going to, I'm not going to infect upon you anything. I don't think it's important what you do, but the two most important things to me as a planning commissioner and as an attorney are to talk about the comprehensive plan, the significance of the comprehensive plan and planning process. And it's certainly to talk about what is probably the bread and butter, what you guys do when you're not planning, okay? Hopefully you're spending time planning, but when you're not planning, you're dealing with my rezoning request, right? Or my conditional use permit request. And that's, that's what we do and all planning commissions do. And it's not an easy topic. I doubt that you all are thinking it's kind of cruising through the rezoning and, and the condition use permit process is complicated. It's mostly complicated because it's, it's an important function of what you do. It's, it's important thing to protect people's lives. You know, um, it sounds like a little bit of a lecture here, but on these, so long this two-page thing here. And in this first session tonight, we'll talk about the basics, you know, the significance of the land use planning, the land use plan, comprehensive plan, it's part of the, the land use element of the comprehensive plan. Talk about the consequences and the opportunities presented by a well-made plan, a well, well-drafted plan. And again, it's like on the street here, as we lead into talking about the rezoning, condition use permit process, it's really important to distinguish between those times when you're all wearing legislative hats, you're in a legislative function as opposed to wearing a judge's hat and playing the role of quasi-judicial. And we'll talk about that in some detail and I imagine you've all read through all the material, right? All right. Well, I'm at reference to the South End, really, I think it's, it's really a big point to you. But when you're, when you're revising the text or proposing amendments to the, to the zoning subdivision regulations or when you're working on revisions to the comprehensive plan, in, in those situations, you're all dealing with legislators. Okay? And that's, has a significance in terms of what your, what your expectations are of you. And, and particularly if, if there's some decision that you make or the county commissioner ultimately makes, that is challenged in court. You know, what standard those decisions are held to, what legal standards apply to you as a legislator as opposed to quasi-judicial judges. And we'll talk about that distinction between those, between those two, those two roles. Also, we'll talk about the role of the, you know, how, how the whole process works, you know, planning commissioners, BCA. Are folks also sitting with BCA members?
Yes, the planning commissioners, there is five of them that also function at BCA.
So we talked, we talked this about the, the BCA, how it, how it performs this job, how it fits into the, into the puzzle. And then, of course, the ultimate authority in the Board of County Commissioners. And we've talked about staff, how the planning staff works in all this as well. I did four here tonight. It's about due process of law and we'll talk about the two components of due process of law. One, the procedural due process of law, which is pretty straightforward. You know, it's the idea of you get, you get public notice, you have an opportunity for people to, that have, that want to speak to the issue, give them an opportunity to speak to the issue. You've had fair and impartial decision makers, okay? You have a record made of, of what's going on and. And that's, that's the basic components of, of, of procedural due process, people understand that. The more challenging and at times confusing concept is that it's called subject due process, which is where you're obliged and your folks upstairs, the Board of County Commissioners, they may be upstairs, right?
Yes.
The people upstairs are charged with making a reasonable decision. Okay? And reasonable does is not some concept that everybody pulls out of the air, applies to their own, own way of thinking. There are, there are legal standards associated with what, what is reasonable, what is not. And we'll talk about that in some detail, that's important stuff. That's, that's what I want to cover tonight. You know, the, so the comprehensive plan and then these different aspects of zoning, rezoning, traditional use permit process, okay? And then on the second page or the backside, the other topics are a little more specific. Passive rights, non-comportances, things of that nature. You know, they're, they're important topics that come up from time to time. And sometimes they come up with vengeance, okay? So you need to have some working knowledge of these, of these issues. But if you're okay with me covering those topics next month and the topics on the first page tonight, is that satisfactory to everybody? And is there, it's more importantly, is there any topic that's, that needs to be? Okay. As you're going to see tonight and at the session next month, Amber's Law and federal law puts a lot of expectations on, on you all and requires you to respect private property rights. Private property rights are held in pretty high regard in this country and they have been since day one. And what you guys do, you make your decisions either in terms of the adoption of a comprehensive plan or recommending the adoption of a comprehensive plan. And, and then you're make specific decisions about what property should be used or in the form of a rezoning application or traditional use permit. You know, you're forming the community. And I know we're talking about unincorporated here. You guys have a little bit of a, you know, it's, you're kind of in between. I've dealt with counties that, you know, it's all unincorporated, you know, it's, it's farmland ninety-nine percent, right? And, and what you've got, you've got a smattering of, of unincorporated communities, right? And, and some growth around some of the smaller, or some of the other incorporated cities. So it's, you got a little, you're kind of dealing with, or I'm speculating that you're dealing with a lot of different issues. It may be a little more complicated setting than some of your counterparts in, in other planning commissions around the state, county planning. So respect for that. Uh, I'm going to get some examples that might sound like I'm coming more out of some urban setting, but I'm doing so with the recognition that you do have some, it may be hard to call it, rather, it's unincorporated, right?
There, there.
Okay. As an, as an, as an urban area, but it's not farmland right there, right? It's a community. And, and decisions you make will affect how that community grows and develops over time. Let me just kind of maybe, hey, my first comment is going to start. I'm home county, but home for the last forty years. And compared to where you all are, Shawnee County has had land use regulations for probably fifty, sixty years in the unincorporated area. Only a couple of years ago did they adopt for the very first time a comprehensive plan. So for years and years, they regulated land, including my property, I hope, without benefit of the touchstone of what the comprehensive plan is, you know? A guidepost for how land should be used and developed. When I was on the planning commission at Shawnee County, the, our planning commission decided right from the, from the beginning that we needed to have a comprehensive plan in order to have, make sense of the land use regulations we have, right? We're operating without a roadmap, is really what you were doing. So we went around, we talked to township boards, trustees, fire districts, the different special units of government and asked them about pros and cons of having a county comprehensive plan. And response was almost unanimous, everybody thought, yeah, it would make sense to do it, have efficiencies and get some idea of where we were going. Took that information to the Board of County Commissioners and said that you need, you need to have a comprehensive plan, you need to do it in-house or hire somebody to help us with it, whatever. And the response we got from the Board of County Commissioners was, well, the state of Kansas doesn't say we have to do one. There's no mandate that you have comprehensive planning if you're a county, so we're not going to do one. So we continued to operate without benefit of comprehensive plan. And it was only until about three years ago that the county finally adopted a plan. One of my favorite episodes from, from the process with the planning commission, when we were holding some public hearings about whether or not we should have a comprehensive plan, had a middle-aged woman got up and was, was visibly angry when she was addressing the planning commission. And she said that we don't need a comprehensive plan, I don't want the county telling me how I could use my land. And advised her that, you know, your, your property has been zoned by the county without benefit of comprehensive plan or, you know, ever since they stole the land from the Indians, you know? And, oh, oh, okay. Anyway. That's what I decided here and there. Not to, not to be repetitive, but, but really for, for emphasis, the work you all do is a matter of great consequence, adopting a comprehensive plan, the land use regulations. The ability to do that is probably second only to the authority of the county to put somebody in jail. And in terms of the, of the seriousness and importance of the, of, of the power that local government has and county government has, okay? The Board of County Commissioners can pass laws, you violate, you go to jail, that's pretty serious. You guys, the role you play and the Board of County Commissioners in the adoption of land use regulations, tell me what I should do with my property. You, you take away restrict my private property rights, okay? In exchange for having the comfort and security of knowing that what my neighbor can do with his or her property is also subject to restrictions that these arguably benefit me and, and restrictions benefit the county at large, right? I mean, it's a trade-off there, you know? But the, the, but the point is, it's, it's, it's a really important power that affects my, the value of my property. You know, if I've got an acre of land, I want to put a, a business park on it, it would make a million dollars. Uh, and you tell me no. I can build a house on it if I want to, but nothing else, well, you know, you've greatly diminished what my, my taken is the value of that property, right? And a millions of dollars, that is worth now tens of thousands of dollars. But the trade-off is my neighbor's not going to put up an office park right next to my house either. Probably not, probably not going to be able to. And so I benefit from that, at least that's the concept. And then the county at large benefits from not having scattered developments, you know, infrastructure costs and inefficiencies and all that all around, all around the unincorporated part of the county. The importance of the power that you have, the extent of your power coupled with the Board of County Commissioners at all times to adopt land use regulations and restrict my development rights. It's so consequential that the law, the state and federal creates some requirements on you as to how you exercise that authority. You know, you can't do something, you can't let me zill my office park on a one-acre piece of land because you like me, okay? And you also can't turn me down because you don't like it, right? There are standards, there are standards that have to be met, we'll talk about that, about how you comply with those standards, how you identify and distinguish between my private interests, the interests of the properties right around me and the interests of the public at large. And you all have to wrestle with, and I don't have a really good answer for you on this, how you wrestle with, you talk about the public at large, whether you're talking about the, you know, and the community interest, are you talking about the community that comprises the unincorporated part of the county? Or are you talking, which is your jurisdiction? Or are you talking about, think about the, in terms of the public interest, the entire county, including where we're standing here right now? And I don't know, have you had any discussion along those lines, Tim?
Not really.
About what the, what the public interest is?
Not really. What I try to do is whenever we have a case, like a conditional use permit or anything like that, I always kind of defer to what our regulations basically, I, I always tell them that, you know, it's basically distinguishes the way that, you know, the, and I know this is something you're going to cover as a golden factors, pretty much cover a lot of that and, and the, the public versus private kind of consideration.
Yeah, we, we talk about the, you know, we come up with some examples here, using Abilene as an example. We'll come back to this later on this evening and kind of keep this in mind. If, if I want to, if I'm going to build an office park in a, in a soybean field, okay? And I can make an argument that the infrastructure is there, it's just right off a highway. I can handle the sewer water, whatever, okay? It's just a little business park or industrial park. And, and it, it has direct impact upon City of Abilene. It is ten miles up here, it was fifteen miles up here. But it has a direct impact upon the City of Abilene, meaning a negative impact potentially, okay? Let's assume some facts here, okay? That it, it appears to be a negative impact on, on, on Abilene, or we can say it's same for Harrington or Chapman, whatever. What, what is your, what is your public interest? Is your public interest the community that you represent and serve and strive to serve the best interest of? Is it just those folks in the unincorporated part of the county or are you talking about the entire county? Including the good folks in Abilene, Chapman, Harrington? We'll come back to that, okay? So that's, it's, there may be no easy, quick answers for all that. So anyway, page one, after all of that, page one of a handout. And I know you all have gone through a, a recent update in comprehensive plan. How many of you were involved in the updates? I was just twenty-two.
I think they all were.
Okay. Well.
One wasn't.
Okay. So I, I know this may be pretty fresh in your mind, but there's a couple of things I wanted to visit with you about. And I observed that I know it, I, I went through the planning, maybe quickly, but spending most of the time talking about the land, thinking about the land use component of it. But I know that your plan was an update to the two thousand seven, two thousand eight plan.
Yeah.
That is done by folks at K-State and specifically by John Keller. And I know a few guys, did you, you remember John Keller? Did you, maybe, John passed away a couple of years ago. He was an attorney and land use professor at K-State in community and regional planning. And again, so, so like my friend saying, a very, very talented, very good guy that's died far too young. So you were, you were fortunate to have John working for the county at, at that point in time. And it hypnotizes me that, you know, the, the format of the two thousand plan, two thousand seven plan, you know, you carried it forward. It was literally an update, but, but historical information that was pretty heavy in there. And so the demographic information was just all updated.
Yeah, we updated the goals and the objectives and that sort of thing in each of the sections and made sure that all of the data for the, was, was updated for the current census, so.
If I have to walk towards you, I recently had a little episode and I've lost a good part of my hearing. And nobody's been able to find it yet, okay? So I, I'm talking, I'm probably talking. So, I, I'm talking, I'm probably talking loud because I can just barely hear myself, okay? A couple of facts. Besides having the good fortune of John Keller doing your work for you a few years ago. As I said before, it's a state law, federal law, nobody tells you you have to have a Conferencing Plan. As witnessed by my experience in Shawnee County. If you do have a plan and if you make land use decisions consistent with what the plan says, then it's a legal matter, if your decision is ultimately challenged in court, the courts are going to find that the decision that was made has a presumption of reasonableness. Okay? We're going to talk about two different concepts here. Legal concepts of presumption of legality and a presumption of reasonableness. And they're both important for the county side, the local government side. But you get a presumption, a legal presumption of reasonableness of your decision if your, if the action you take is consistent with the Conferencing Plan, okay? We'll come back, we'll come back to that. Another fact that you may or may not be aware of is that unlike cities, a county that wants to undertake planning and zoning doesn't have to do it for the entirety of the unincorporated part of the county. You all can adopt a Conferencing Plan that just covers the corridor along I-70 if you choose to and leave the rest of the county out of it. You could do that. You could, and, and you could have zoning and subdivision regulations just within the corridor. Where you could have a ring around Abilene or ring around Chapman and just have regulations that apply there, that are called the Conferencing Plan on the slides there. Cities can't, can't do that. Cities have to, if you're going to plan and zone, you have to do it for the entirety of the jurisdiction, which makes all this great good sense. But at some point in time, the legislature decided that it wasn't necessary to impose that kind of standard upon counties. And it's a recognition that many counties in Kansas will have a, you might have an urbanized area and then everything else is, you know, farmland, range land, you know? And, and the zoning is really of limited value in some of the, in maybe the great part of the county. So, anyway, you don't have to do it. And as I said before, counties, unlike cities, you can, you can have zoning and subdivision regulations without having, without having a Conferencing Plan in Shawnee County. So, why have a plan? Well, yeah, I know you guys business process and so, probably preaching to the choir. And if not, speak out. But, you know, you have a Conferencing Plan because you want to identify where the community is. You know, what the state of the community, economically, housing, demographics, the business opportunities, the level of social services, all that. So, what, what condition is the, is the community in? Whether it's urban or unincorporated area. And secondly, where does it want to go? What's the, what's, what's the game plan? Where, where does the county want to be, you know, 10 years, 20 years? The, the plan gets to 2050, is that right? So, where does the county want to be in the year 2050? And then importantly, how do you get to point A to point B? You know, what, what's the solution and what kind of problems might be there along the way? And I know you have a, a SWAP approach to the, in the Conferencing Plan, which is helpful. One of the best things in my experience about a Conferencing Plan, and I've done a number of them over the years, is if, if you have a community engaged, if you have involvement by as many people as possible, either through direct steering committees, through, through town hall meetings, whatever you want to call it. Or at the very least through sophisticated, Conferencing surveys for folks. Ownership by the public, engagement, ownership. That means credibility. That if you've got a plan that has credibility, it's got ownership, a lot of people have been engaged in participating in the creation of it, then you have a, a document that helps pull the community together, okay? But I, it's not just in theory. I mean, I've, I've seen it. I've seen it work that way. I've also seen where it doesn't work, but that's for another day. Something that's going to, we've talked, we're talking about several, it's several points tonight. We're talking about rezoning and conditional use permits and so on. This idea of the public interest, we're talking about it a few moments ago, about what, what is the public. As we get into that subject, I would suggest to you that, you know, whenever you're dealing with a rezoning, my rezoning application, I want to, I want to put a welding shop on my, on my farm and it's going to, welding's not a permitted use in Ag district, is it?
I, I need to clarify something. We, the county in 2008 got rid of commercial and industrial zones. So, the only zoning that we do is for subdivisions. So, like when someone has a residential subdivision, we have residential zoning districts. But a commercial, everything else is handled through a conditional use permit.
Okay, okay, okay. Keep this in mind, and, and it's in the material, but this is, same court decision, it said this. The process you use when you consider a conditional use permit is identical to a rezoning. Because it's, it's site-specific. The courts say it's a change in zoning, just like a rezoning is, okay? Residential to commercial, residential to Ag, Ag to commercial, those rezonings, okay? But your conditional use permit is also a change in zoning, lines of the appellate courts in Kansas. So, you need to follow the same procedures, make the same kind of findings. You follow the same process of notice and hearing and record keeping and fair and impartial decision-making, all of that procedural process. But you also have to meet the standard of reasonableness when you make your decision whether or not to grant me a conditional use permit, just like you do when you're, when I'm dealing with a rezoning application, okay? When I'm making requests for a rezoning application. So, that's, you're, that's in the material and it's an important point, yeah.
The standard of, could you explain to them again what the standard of, the standard of reasonableness?
Yeah.
Reasonableness is and how that would relate to how they would deliberate on a case?
We're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about that, yeah.
What page is that on? Standard of reasonableness.
I'm sorry, Dan.
What, what page is that on? Standard of reasonableness.
Take a look at, what we can find is, on page nine and also on page 22, are, it's sort of the reverse. It tells you what is not reasonable, okay? An arbitrary decision is not a reasonable decision, okay? And we'll come back, we'll come back to that some more, but. But that's, it's, it's a reference to a case called Martin Marietta in, on page 22 and I think also on page nine. And another case called the combined investment incorporated. And those both deal with arbitrariness in the, in the context of a rezoning decision. Sorry to say, a moment ago, whenever you're dealing with a rezoning or conditional use permit, and the question comes up about public interest, what is the public interest? This relation back to the Conferencing Plan. The Conferencing Plan is, if it's done correctly, if it's, if it's a solid plan, whether that has legitimacy, it is the single best expression of what the public interest is. There's nothing else out there that's better than the Conferencing Plan, that the Conferencing Plan is, is a solid document. The reason for that is that it's a legally adopted document. It's a policy statement by the Board of County Commissioners. You guys send it upstairs, the Board of County Commissioners adopts it. It is a statement of what the public interest is. And that was public interest run throughout, throughout the book, if, throughout the plan. If you say that, as your plan does, you're protecting the rural character of the county in the importance of the interest, that's a touchstone. That's something that should be considered when I come in and ask for my rezoning of my soybean field to a subdivision, okay? It may not be determinative, you know? Maybe it will be, but maybe not. But it's, it's an important consideration. And it's something that I have to overcome, or I need to, in my advocacy, I will try to overcome that argument that, that the public interest is better served by preserving the rural character and that means no subdivision, okay? I'm talking in generalities here. You, you don't want to say that I, I need to. If, if there's something in the Conferencing Plan that is beneficial to my application, I'm going to find it or my lawyer's going to find it when we look at the application and present it to you all, okay? Likewise, if there's language in the Conferencing Plan that is negative, I'm going to try and make an argument, well, it's downplay that language because it's outdated or it's just wrong, or conditions have changed such, then you need to take another look at my piece of property, the area I'm in, because now it's, it's no longer really, uh, farmland. It's, it's developing into, into some commercial or industrial, some non-agricultural uses, okay? But, the point is, the point is that the, that the strongest, the stronger the Conferencing Plan is, the more it articulates what the policy objectives of the county are, the better the document is for, as an expression of what the public interest is. And the more you can rely upon it when you're making your decisions and trying to wrestle with what, what is the public interest and how is public interest, the larger public interest might be different than the neighborhood interest or the interests I have as, as the applicant. Okay, my personal private property interest. Stepping away from that for just a moment here, if you look on pages one through five of the handout, have some excerpts from some different Conferencing Plans. So, I could have looked at language from your, your plan too, but these are, these are some plans that I was related with. I'm a, a few, hitting a couple of years on them. But pages one through three is an excerpt from the Troy City-County Plan. City of Lawrence, Douglas County. Page three and four has an excerpt from the Concordia Conferencing Plan. And four to five is from the Miami County Conferencing Plan, it was done a few years ago. And it's just their statements. They're probably not greatly different than what, what you have in yours. But it's, it's trying to educate to the public, you know, what the purpose of the Conferencing Plan is. If your con, plan is online, I don't know how often members of the public view it, but, but having it online is great because it's, at least it's there. It's, you're expecting a lot of people to, to have them sit down and read the Conferencing Plan. And you're expecting a lot of people even know that the county has a Conferencing Plan unless they read the paper at the time that the plan is under discussion and, and being adopted. Pages six through seven, I'm just saying out the, the basic procedure for what state law as far as for the Conferencing Plan, how it's supposed to be put together. You guys do the study, you hold a public hearing, they have recommendations, Board of County Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, you have a lesson, the way you send it to them, or they send it back to you with suggestions for changes. And I don't, did, did your update come back to you, the county commission?
Well, it went to the county commission after these guys made their recommendation. And it said, it did, they, they passed it. So, I mean, with no, no issue.
So, it was adopted just the way it left here?
Yes.
Okay. Right, good.
I think a lot of that was because we also had a, oh, what do you, what do you call them? One of those, a committee to look it over and to. Yeah, a steering committee, yeah. And comprised of a, a county commissioner, a planning commissioner, and a couple of other people from the public to look it over and see what needed to be changed.
So, there's a strategic, strategy involved there. Getting, again, getting ownership by the Board of County Commissioners, still a work in progress.
Yeah.
There you go. Well, it worked, right? Yeah, and you know, from, just a couple more points here about the Conferencing Plan. I, I'm going to be talking, what I have been talking about, it's how the Conferencing Plan relates to the land use case of the puzzle. There's a lot of other information you have in your Conferencing Plan. You've got the history of, of the county and older communities in the county. You've got information about housing, about social services, about police, fire, all sorts of services that are available in, in the community and in the county. So, it's a lot of, your public health, there's a lot of information other than, other than land use. The state says that you need, the Conferencing Plan needs to provide for some explanation of the anticipation of future use of property. And many communities will, rather than going through and identifying block by block or section by section, what the future looks like under the plan. They'll adopt, it's called the Future Land Use Map. And it'll look like the city of Abilene and their Conferencing Plan will have a future land use map, a nice eight, 10 color document that, that shows single family, multi-family, light industrial, heavy industrial, commercial, commercial, commercial.
Ours is, ours is pretty simple.
Well, yours is LISO or LUSA, I don't know how you, how you guys pronounce it.
LESA.
LESA, okay. And east of Kansas, we call it something else. Okay, no, LESA. Okay. And, and the map that you have in there, I think, one, one in particular is really a future land use map. It shows the land that can be developed.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what you, if somebody comes in the door and says, where's your future land use map? You point them to that page in the Conferencing Plan, right? Yeah, yeah. That's fine, that's fine. That makes sense to, to do that. The state law tries to put a little bit of emphasis upon making sure that the plan just doesn't set up on the shelf and, and gather dots. And one way to do that is to call for annual review. And it's put the charge on the Planning Commission to make an annual review of the Conferencing Plan, to make changes, bring it up to date, you know, fix, fix problems in it and make improvements in it. Reality is, there's no real penalty for not doing that, okay? But, and this happens if, if I have a, if I was just practicing and I had a client who turned, was turned down and has her rezoning application because it was inconsistent with the Conferencing Plan. And I go in and find out the Conferencing Plan hasn't been touched in the last 15 years. That's a pretty good argument I'm going to make, that the Conferencing Plan should be ignored. You know, that it should not be determinative of my client's application. Whereas if the Confer, if the record shows that the Conferencing Plan is being looked at periodically, hopefully annually, then I'm going to have, I'm not going to be able to use that argument against the, against the county, so. And, and sometimes, Tim, it's just a matter of, and we do this in Shawnee County. I'm not serious, it's City of Chica, sorry. It's City of Chica. Like at a year-end meeting, the staff will, for example, you know, they're, we need to make changes to page 15, they need to page, page 30. Sometimes they're saying everything's fine, there's no need, but the record will show that it was reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission concurred in whatever the staff recommendation was. And that's, it may seem trivial, but it, but it is important or can be important. Last thing about Conferencing Plan, thank God. If you take a look at page seven through nine of the handout, once upon a time, not all that long ago, if I went into court and said, well, the Conferencing Plan says X, Y, Z, a court is going to say, well, so what? It's just a plan. It's just a plan. It doesn't have any, any meat or any teeth to it. It's just a plan. The material in the handout talks about a couple of cases. And hopefully, in my opinion, hopefully, there'll, there'll be more cases like these coming down from the appellate courts in Kansas, or decisions like this, which puts some importance upon what the Conferencing Plan says. And so, like I was saying 20 minutes ago, that the stronger worded, the better articulated policy objectives are for the county set out in the Conferencing Plan, the more that the county counselor can rely upon that in defending, or the county attorney can rely upon it in defending challenges to your decisions. And the less likely it is that I can attack your decisions for being inconsistent with the Conferencing Plan, okay? your decisions for being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, okay? So it's an opportunity that's been created, and cities and counties have not been too quick to pick up on that. I think they're getting better, plans are getting much better. Not that long ago, plan, you'd see plans that were written on the back of an envelope, you know, a couple page document, pretty shallow, any consequence. But now, we see more importance being put on it, and it's just, it's more and more opportunity to articulate what the, what the, what the county wants to do.
Have you reviewed our comprehensive plan, where would it be on a scale of one to 10?
I'm sorry?
Have you reviewed our comprehensive plan, where would it be on a scale of one to 10? And one of these, my desire.
Well, you know, again, I focus on the land use piece of it. And you have, like you're reading my notes, reading my notes, you want to preserve prime ag land, I don't, you may use that term, I'm not sure, your prime ag land, page 138 of your comprehensive plan has that, you want to maintain rural character, page 138 of the comprehensive plan, not in my document, I didn't go that by, but they've been, so it's in there. You have, I'll throw you one word, it's a little confusing, you have a language that talks about wanting to promote affordable housing, and multifamily housing too, I think, right? But the reality is, in your county, the unincorporated part of the county, according to comprehensive plan, 98% of the housing is single family, and if you look at the land use, I'm picking on you, Tim, here, you didn't adopt the regulations, but the zoning regulations that I looked at, including for the unincorporated communities, the residential districts, they tend to only have one residential district, and they're limited to single family housing.
The village district?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they did.
They could fix that, Tim.
Yeah, well, I think the reasoning behind that was because what they wanted to do was, because those communities were smaller, there might not be the resources or the infrastructure available for them to multifamily yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wasn't here.
No, I don't.
I don't know.
Oh, I know.
But I mean, it's saying, I mean, we struggle with this.
Sure.
We struggle with it in Shawnee County, we struggle with it in Topeka, housing.
We're struggling with it, or they're struggling with it in Saline County as well, so, yeah.
When you say prime ag land, I've got the comprehensive plan on my phone, there's best agricultural land, and there's suitable agricultural land. How do you distinguish the two?
Well, that's part of your land use model, your license.
Yes, best, the best land is in the middle of a section. So like if you have, the way that it's drawn out, or I should say, the middle of a township. So the middle, if you take like New Bern, the middle of the township is considered best agricultural land, because there's not a whole lot of infrastructure along here, well, there might be along 15, that's wrong. But it said, usually what you'll do is, you'll have, in the case of New Bern, best agricultural land just to the east of 15, and then to the west of 15, to Fair Road. So, and it would be basically encircling those two little areas that are in the middle part of the township, because the closer you get to where infrastructure is, is where development is preferred. And so it's a graded thing, where it goes from the best in the middle, and then somewhere in between, you know, towards the, as you get closer towards the roads.
So the LISA model appears to, with the different shaded colors.
Yes.
The dark green, which is best, appears to follow the topography of the land, with the bottom ground the best, but, okay, I was just curious on the...
And James, there's some other samples too, and what are policies that the county has in the land use element, that you want to encourage, it's just a pivot saying, you want to encourage non-ag growth to occur in the proximity of cities, where there's either existing or planned infrastructure, then support that without exorbitant cost to taxpayers. I mean, that's just, that's like smart growth.
And improved roads.
I'm sorry?
Improved roads, along improved roads.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, close proximity to sewer lines, and water lines, gas, electricity, all that, you know, it's just, and smart, I don't think smart growth is not a term that's been vilified. I mean, it's a good solid, I mean, it's a economy, efficiency in economy, and keeping costs for taxpayers under control.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Then, in your definition, best agriculture is in the city, center of the township?
Yes.
So you're saying there's better infrastructure around the outside of the township?
Yeah, along the roads. Yes, along the, wherever you see infrastructure, like roads.
Right.
You're going to have...
You're going to have better roads on the outside of a township than your inside?
No, no, you're going to have any roads, that's why I said New Bern is a bad example, because you got 15, which is pretty darn good.
Oh, okay.
And so, but let's say something like, oh, Flora. Okay, Flora up here, I said, the way that our, the LUSA model works, which is, development is best, if you take like along these first couple of sections, on either side of Fair Road, and then the closer you get to the center, is the, is the prime agricultural land. Because you have, when you get closer to Fair Road, you've got more infrastructure, you've got a paved road, you've got, you know...
So you're not taking into account soil type, depth of soil, depth of bedrock, anything like that?
No, so you're just looking at infrastructure.
Infrastructure availability.
Availability of the outside of a township versus limited infrastructure towards the center.
Right.
So then the town shouldn't be located in the center of the township.
Within, I'll word it this way, within proximity of a road, it is, where there's going to be infrastructure and therefore development potential. Whereas in the middle, where there's no roads, and where there's a lot of ag land that's zoned ag 40, or excuse me, ag 80, if you look at our zoning map, there's an ag 80 and there's an ag 40. Ag 80 is right dead center of some of those, you know, around where, you know, in where there's not very many roads, okay, where there's no paved roads and no developed roads. It's primarily in areas where there's not a whole lot of infrastructure, is where you're going to find the prime land.
Literally, the last thing I want to mention about the comprehensive plan is pages eight and nine, and I don't think you have this feature, the zoning regs for the comprehensive plan, and that is way to, essentially to force consistency between the plan and the land use regulations. And the language, yeah, this language, to the effect, says that if, if the end result, the decision on my rezoning, I may decide by the Board of County Commissioners, if it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, that in order for it to go forward and be finally approved, the county needs to make a finding to justify the deviation from the comprehensive plan. Now, for years, I have pushed, encouraged, I should say, encouraged, city, well, cities and counties to consider language like that, they've only been successful a couple times, because it really, it puts more teeth in the comprehensive plan, and forces the city of the county to really put some thought in the comprehensive plan. And I understand people might not like the idea, but it empowers the comprehensive plan by saying that this is the county's plan, and this is the city's plan, and if you're going to do something that's at odds with it, justify why you're doing it. There's either been changed conditions, or the, by rezoning, it's going to be of such great value to the community at large that this overcomes the policy that's set out in the comprehensive plan. So that's part of the record that's in there, you're making a choice. The absence of that, what prompted me to push language, promote language like this, is where you get decisions made by a city or county that are just flat out inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Just, you know, the plan says X, and the action says Y, okay? And how do you, you can't reconcile that. So means, and the decision, the land use decision is the law, right? We don't need a whole little match. The comprehensive plan, well, it has, it's getting more and more authority in the courts, it's still not the law, okay? So what happens when you have land use decisions that are contrary to, or in conflict with the comprehensive plan, you gut it, you knock holes in the comprehensive plan, and it loses legitimacy. Maybe you do that a couple times, no big deal, you do 30, 40, 50 times, and you end up with a document that's not worth anything.
Yeah, question. And we kind of discussed this before we started, there's, could you explain that there is a subjectivity that is built into the all comprehensive plans to allow for flexibility for change? And that's, so what you're perceiving sometimes as a gutting might actually be something that's just an interpretational difference?
That's where weasel words come into their value, okay? If that's what you want, you build that into the plan, okay? So you are allowing for that, allowing for this change in circumstances or whatever, to recognize the occur, you're not going to be out there changing the comprehensive plan every time you meet, you're not going to do that.
Right.
Everybody knows that. So it's going to be out of sync for a while, under the best circumstances. But if you have some weasel words in here, some wording acknowledging flexibility, and having that in the plan itself, rather than just saying, well, that was part of our consideration, you know, put it in writing, put it in writing. Let me, don't overdo it.
Yeah.
Well, it's 801, I was planning on spending about 45 minutes on the comprehensive plan. Any questions about the comprehensive plan, about the planning process? You beat it to death. Yeah, yeah. I'm not, I don't think I'm expressing this very well, but the plan is really important, it really is, and it's becoming more so over time, and it ought to be important, it's a plan. If people talk about this terrible analogy, that governments figure out like a business, and so I don't buy that at all, but I buy the piece of it that says, if you're a business, you have a plan, government needs to have a plan.
But the plan is not the law.
Right, it's not the law, not yet. In some states it is, but not in Kansas. But again, piece by piece, as the courts look at plans, and the more they look at good plans that actually address the issue that's in front of them, they're becoming quicker to try and make that connection.
What this...
Saying, if you do something that's contrary, if you take, you, the county does something that's contrary to what you said in the plan, you better explain why.
What this board is familiar with from me is that, in my staff reports, I have a section that says, you know, that says, that says, is this compatible with the comprehensive plan? And I show into, I explain that it's in a certain area that is acceptable for this type of development, or this type of, and I'll explain that, and I'll, you know, and reference the comprehensive plan.
If I have a rezoning or conditional use permit, that's going to require knocking down a historic structure, that you point out in the comprehensive plan, that you've got a policy objective on page 138, again, of preserving and protecting historic areas and historic structures, right? Yeah, but that's it, that's, that's what should be done. Every time, every time you have a rezoning or conditional use permit, there should be some touchstone somewhere in the comprehensive plan, and that should be part of the staff report. All right. Here I talk about, we don't need a break, do we?
Yeah.
To talk about zoning authority and the rezoning process. You know, it's, I'm sort of like the old guy, I guess I am the old guy, but over the years, let's see, there's a phenomenon out here that, you know, people, over the years, if anything, there's been a higher level of increasing, let's see, it's a decreasing level of trust in government. We all agree with that, I mean, it used to be confined to the federal government, then it became the federal and state government, and now it's you guys too, right? I mean, everybody, everybody just painted with the same brush, city, counties, state defense. So people distrust government, and they also want control of their own private property, you know, because for most people, the private property they own, whether it's a house, or farm, whatever, it's their principal asset, right? It's the retirement fund, it's what they got. But apparently, you want that, you've got that distrust of government, and you have this desire to have control over what you can do with the property, but you're okay with the government restricting your development rights. I talked about this almost an hour ago, it's, it's a phenomenon. I'm okay with the government, which I don't trust, taking away my private property development rights, and it just, it kind of goes with the landscape, I'm okay with it. I can farm my land, I can build a single family house on it, but if I want to do anything else with it, then maybe I can't even build a single family house, I've got to come running to the courthouse and get permission to build something, okay? In the absence of zoning, in the absence of zoning, you can go wherever the hell you want to, wherever you want to, right? I mean, it's, that's the thing, but people accept, people accept this restriction of their private property, and I'm a private, I'm a, I'm simultaneously a private property rights, but I'm also a pro zoning guy, okay? And I'm a government guy, okay? I'm a pro government guy, don't hate you for that, and I'm a pro government guy. But it just, it just strikes me over and over again, how people are, like they're holding these totally opposite views at the same time, you know? Leave me alone, but okay, I'm okay with you taking my private property development rights away. Because, and the only answer that I can come up with that is because, we talked about an hour ago, is because at the same time that you are imposing these restrictions on me, you're imposing upon my neighbor, right? My neighbor can't build or put in a rock quarry, or gun range, or whatever, whatever that I might find offensive right next door to me, at least can't do it without coming to the county and getting permission to do it. And so I appreciate that, that stability and predictability that I have, that the zoning regulation provides for me, right?
I guess as a landowner, I have a vision of what I am purchasing, and where I want to live, and how I want it to be, and we don't like change.
Yeah.
When I purchased that farm, I visualized to the left, to the right, down the creek, up the creek, and that's what I purchased, and I don't want that to change. And so that's what I'm asking the government.
And the answer, if you're asking, Martin, if that's what you want, if that's really important to you, go out and buy that land to the east and west, north and south, if that's what you want. At your speed, you know?
But that's what I'm wanting the government to help me with, that's why I'm accepting that, is that they will have some judgment, they will have some judgment in keeping the vision.
But that neighbor has private property rights.
Yes, he has.
Has every right to come here and say, I want to turn this soybean field into a bunch of asphalt.
And that's my risk.
Yeah.
That's my risk, is that my neighbor wants to put a cattle feed yard right beside my home, my deck.
Nobody has an expectation as to what their neighbor's zoning is going to be in the future. You don't have an expectation as to what your zoning is going to be in the future, because the county could initiate a rezoning over your objection. That doesn't happen very often, but it can happen, it can happen. That's usually like the third rail after most local governments, and you don't, you don't do that, but you have the ability to. So the significance that means is, you don't have a legally protected right in your future zoning. You always have a future protective right of the use that you're making of your property, as long as it's a legal use, but in terms of the zoning, we'll talk about that some more too, it's an important concept. Let me give you another Topeka story, okay, that's along your lines. This happened in, in the last year or so, the planning commission, we have an undeveloped area, which was, part of it was pasture, part of it was used for corn, corn swivens, right in the city of Topeka, right near the soldier creek. right near the Soldier Creek area that runs through North Topeka. And it's about like a twenty-acre parcel of land. And I've been buying many, many, many times and the soil that I've never developed, it was a pretty piece of ground. We had an application come in for a guy who'd rezoned it from residential. It was already sold residential, but it's agricultural use. It was a single-family residential. He wanted to put duplexes in, like the twenty duplexes of this one acre lot. Forty duplexes, forty duplexes, forty units, I'm sorry, twenty duplexes, forty units of this lot. Property owners to the north, really upset about it, you know? And it's an area that had been built out up in the 1930s. So these people were several generations that had been living in their homes. And they came in mass, you know, protest, they were checking to the rezoning. And several of the people made the very same argument that you were making, Mark. I remember a woman who got up and said that I like to sit out and drink coffee and look at the deer and the turkeys and the trees out here. And this is, this is, I live for this. This, I have a big picture window and I love doing this. And say, you know, I can identify with that. I have a real fun farm, you know, I know what you're talking about. But it's not your property. It's not your property. If you want to keep that few, buy it. And rumors of discontent ran through the room since I said that, you know? Said, well, I can't afford that, I can't afford this. Well, one word short, the guy couldn't follow through on the development because he couldn't make a sewer connection. But we approved the rezoning, you know? But it's that point. And I've heard this at the other, I don't know about the times as well. I like the way things look. I want it to stay the same. I, maybe it's not a pastoral scene like that, maybe it's single-family houses that somebody wants to put a apartment building in. So I don't want that because it's going to block my view, you know? You know, whatever the use is, you know, I don't want it. I want the status quo and I expect the government to maintain the status quo for me. And sometimes the government will properly, sometimes the government will improperly and there's litigation over it. What can I say? You know, it's a flip response to say, go out and buy the damn property if you like it so much, you know? But in this country, that's, that's kind of the way the rule is, you know? All right. You know, we're also dealing in Topeka with housing, affordable housing issues. And right now deeply involved in trying to, trying to have a public discussion about allowing duplexes to be placed in single-family zoning neighborhoods. Okay? It's not a major, this is happening around the country. Where you're trying to increase the density, provide housing without sprawling the city out and all that. It's more efficient to have two units on a piece of land than one housing unit. But people, again, the idea, you put it out there and people think immediately, my next-door neighbor's going to tear their house down and put up a duplex. And they don't like that. They don't like that for several reasons. One of which unfortunately is because there's a lot of deep-seated distrust or dislike for renters and for landlords. And that kind of, that kind of prejudice comes forward when you talk about those like that. But the point is, it's the, it's that predictability and stability that people want to have, even at their own expense. I don't want my neighbor to be able to put a duplex in and I'm willing to forego any opportunity I have to put a duplex in on my property if I can keep my neighbor from doing it. There. I have to go where I'm coming from and why I stopped here. I'm old enough to have opinions and don't back down from them, I guess. Page, page two fourteen. I have instructions about where your legal authority comes from. And this is another kind of zoning law, one of the worst. Anything you guys do, anything the Board of County Commissioners do, anything that a city council or city commission does, it has to have legal authority, right? I mean, but legal or not, I mean, there are people in this country that don't believe, that don't understand that. You have to have some source of authority to do what you do. It's not just a crash sheet, you know? You can't just go into office and do what you want. You have to have a legal authority. You guys' function as, with plans and land use regulations, you know, it's a narrower, a narrower set of issues than what the Board of County Commissioners deal with. But like them, you have to have legal authority to do what you do. You've got two sources of authority. One is the Kansas County and City, City and County Planning and Zoning Enablement Act, which is referenced throughout the handout. It's KSA 12 Act 741 and following sections. This is that reconstitute of the state statutory law that I mentioned that we're talking about through the legislative panel. And it's the law that sets out, that empowers cities and counties to have planning commissions or to zoning appeals, to have comprehensive plans, to adopt zoning subdivision regulations and the process for the adoption of those regulations and a handful of requirements that you have to have. With the federal law out there, the due process of law, laws regarding discrimination, equal protection, some religious protection laws, I forgot the right word for it, but, but you have different laws that you have to adhere to. But the state law, the Enabling Act is just a skeleton. It just sets out some very basic rules as to what you can do and how you need to do it if you choose to have, exercise the power. So the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act doesn't tell you how many zoning districts you need to have. You guys have ten, fifteen different zoning classifications, right?
Yeah, we have, yeah, most of those are residential.
Yeah, yeah. But the state law doesn't care about that. It doesn't say, you know, you have to have five residential districts and three commercial districts. It's up to the city and the county to decide that. Likewise, the state law doesn't tell you what uses that you can have in any zoning district. And you've got both permitted and conditional uses in any zoning district. And that's up to the county, not to the cities, or cities to decide those uses. Just like, you know, the more specific stuff about how tall a mill need to be, what lot sizes need to be, what kind of setbacks you need to have. I haven't looked, I've got to tell you, I'm not like yet at your subdivision regulations, but you've got subdivision regulations that relate to, that provide lot sizes and setbacks and everything for, again, for these areas around the communities, right? The incorporated communities. Yeah. I'll go back to that. But all that kind of stuff, all that detailed stuff is left up to the county. And as long as you, you know, as long as you, as long as you exercise the power that is out there in the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act, as long as you do it properly, then it goes back to this presumption of legality. You have that presumption that, that what you're doing is, is legal. You have a second source of authority. This may get a little confusing for you because you probably haven't had any reason. You get exposed to this. Over on page ten and eleven, if you remember, it's like, of a whole rule. And it's a commonly misunderstood by the general public that you all are public officials. So you, you know better. Cities in Kansas have constitutional home rule. A grant of authority that comes directly from the people of Kansas to cities. So the city of Abilene has constitutional powers, which is very consequential. Dickinson County and every other county in the state has home rule of a statutory nature, which is not as good as constitutional. I mean, it's not as strong. But the state legislature back in 1974 granted all counties statutory home rule. It allows counties to legislate on matters which haven't been legislated on by the county and also allows the county to legislate on matters that, the state does have legislation on, state laws on, so long as you're not in conflict with those state laws. Okay? Very significant. That's the material in the handout. It's very significant. You also, the third piece of this, and that is that even if what you want to do is at odds with the state law, you may have the ability to exempt the county from that state law. You guys can't do it before the county commissioners, I still. But they pass a charter resolution to exempt the county from a state law that otherwise applies to Dickinson County. And it's not, not as strong as it sounds because you can do that only if the law that applies to Dickinson County does not apply to every other county in the state in the same way. Okay? So there are layers you've got to go through. Okay? But if you've got a law, if the legislature passes a law that says Dickinson County cannot do X, Y, Z. And if the legislature fails to put that provision into another separate statute which lists those subjects that the counties cannot exercise home rule on. And this, I know this is getting a little wordy here. But, but if the county, if the state adopts a law that says Dickinson County cannot do something or has to do something in a certain way, and that's not pleasing to the Board of County Commissioners, they can pass a charter resolution which exempts the county from that law. Okay? Again, there are some exceptions to that, but it's really an important authority and it's probably something that the times would live in right now. If the county didn't have home rule, it never did it. The legislature would never give it to counties. And if the cities didn't have it right now, the legislature would never allow it to be put on the ballot for cities to have home rule. It just, you know, it wouldn't happen. So it's a pretty precious, pretty precious authority.
The home rule question is one that everybody asks me, you know, that, you know, why it's so hard for counties to enforce like nuisance laws and things, right? I said, it's because we don't really have the authority to do a whole lot. We have to, we're not like cities that have their own judicial courts to be able to do that. We have to go through the district court, you know?
I don't recall. I mentioned that there's, there's a statute on the books that says the following are topics that counties cannot legislate on in home rule. And that damn list keeps getting lower and lower. It's up like thirty-five or thirty-six, I think.
I think it's thirty-eight.
And nuisance abatement, maybe, but I don't, I don't. But one of my points would be, and again, I'm getting a little far afield with this, and not to shock anybody, but state legislature is not afraid of local government, okay? The state legislature is not afraid of the county. The state legislature is not afraid of the city of Abilene. You know, it's, it's a hostile relationship. It really is. Unfortunately, I don't take pleasure in saying that, but state, the state government, the legislature is always concerned about the exercise of home rule authority. And one reason why it's possible, county, no county has pushed this, what you're talking about, is just the fear of litigation. It's always tough to be the first one because some counties have been locked down, slapped down for exercising home rule. And I can give you, for instance, another more short. Norman County, about twenty-five years ago, I was hired by the county to help draft some regulations for confined-out eating operations, keros, hog farms. And we did it and we got sued. And our argument was that this was a lawful exercise of home rule authority. And the Supreme Court said, no, it wasn't. And Supreme Court was wrong. I'm sorry. The case, that decision's still on the books. And they can't, yeah, they can't take my license the way I'm retired. That's right. But it was really unfortunate, but, but it's the first time around, you know, when there's nuisance abatement. And to the point here, if you read through this material, coming back to what you guys do, about, I don't know, maybe fifteen years ago or so, and case is mentioned in the handout. This is where the page of ten or eleven. A court, the court said that counties can use their home rule power to exempt themselves from provisions of the Planning and Zoning Enablement Act. So if there was something about the act that you found offensive, in the last one, that court decision, the county could say, we're going to pass a charter resolution and exempt ourselves from that part of the act and make our improvement. Now, no one has done that, to my knowledge. But Shawnee County did it, attempted to do it, and they did it wrong. And I don't know that anybody else has tried it since then. But there's so few things in the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act that are offensive or cumbersome that it seems a little, I don't know what you'd want to exempt yourself from. You know, if there's something in there that you think it could be better, you could probably do a little workaround on it and do something, do it in a way that doesn't conflict with the state law and just be done with it. But it's an interesting thing that the county, according to that court decision, has the ability to exempt itself from the provisions of the Planning and Zoning Enablement Act. The court, the same decision, and other courts have said the cities do not have that authority. There's a lot more to talk about that, but that's, that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if Dickinson County wants to be the, the poster child for the exercise of home rule, but maybe, maybe, that'd be great. Would be great. Page fourteen has, starts talking about some of the structure of the zoning. I'm going to speed things up here with my time. You know, what we had in Kansas is very traditional use-based zoning regulation. You may have seen in the paper a year or so ago, the city of Emporia got twisted up a little bit in wanting to do what's called form-based zoning. And that state law doesn't allow for form-based zoning. Where you're looking at the form of the structure as opposed to the use that's going on in the structure. Kansas law is based on the use of the land, not the form of the structure of the CIs. And that runs pretty much through the whole, the whole regulatory scheme. You have agriculture, you've got industrial, commercial, which is a combined industrial, commercial, you know? And again, you've got permitted and conditional use of some land within each, within each category. And the residential results, again, to single-family, everywhere in the county, right? BZAs. Page fourteen and fifteen has labels about the BZAs and the power. I don't know how often you guys face the variances and exceptions and appeals that you have that authority.
Since I have been here, since I have been here, we have never had any variances going before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I, you know, and like I say, a lot of times it's, our regulations, I think, have enough leeway in them built in as far as setbacks and things like that. Like I'll do like the, like if somebody has a setback, because that's what the BZA is for, is for that kind of appeal. And so like if somebody wants to build something that's close to, closer to the road than what we're allowing, then I'll take like the law of commonality. I'll just go along, you know, where I look at the other houses or the other structures along that roadway and take an average and say, yeah, you can put it here. And they usually are happy with that without having to go to the BZA office, so.
When I've been working with cities and counties, the bulk of what I've done over the years is drafting zoning subdivision regulations. And over recent years, it's been more and more, it's more and more common, put in provisions like what Tim's talking about, but actually empowering staff to make the, you know, changes and try and avoid the current variance because of the state law. It's a procedure whereby you can change a setback by up to twenty percent, fifty percent, something like that.
Our is ten.
Yeah. You know, just to clean up and keep, keep things moving so you don't have to wait, I don't have to wait thirty days for the BZA to be, and then thirty more days maybe for a decision, you know? I can just go down and in five minutes' time get a, get an administrative action, right?
Right.
Page fourteen has the ag purpose exemption, which is referenced in there. I don't know if you have any questions about that. Sometimes that comes up, this, this idea, I mean, it's Black Letter Law in Kansas that has been on the books for many years, that land issues exclusively from agricultural purposes, land and buildings, exempt from zoning regulations. Okay? Take a look at. Let's mention again about, go back to this legislative versus quasi-judicial function that you guys have. When you are making a text amendment to the land use regulations, we're off the comprehensive plan, we're like, we're talking about zoning regulations, subdivision regulations. And you want to make a change to to the listing of uses that are allowed in the commercial, industrial. Can I have a welding shop in the?
We don't have commercial or industrial. It's all conditional use.
Okay, is there a conditional use for welding shop?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to go before the, the planning commission.
Okay, okay. Is this a Dave Yearout county?
Yes.
I should have known, I should have asked that if I, if I take a closer look. Dave Yearout, did you do Dave? Dave Yearout was a planning consultant, he's been around, was around for a long time, another good friend, who's dead now. All my friends are dead, all my friends are dead. Dave was, worked for the county, I guess, and Dave had, went around the state and one of his earmarks, or whatever, one of his calling cards was to make everything a conditional use permit. You know, I guess it works, it's workable. When, the next time you have a opportunity or desire to redo your zoning regulations, I would, I would suggest you take a hard look at getting away from the conditional use permit procedure. And Dave and I used to go round and round on this, and he was, he was convinced it was the right way to do things. I, I'm concerned that it presents an opportunity if there's too much arbitrary. But you've got to be really careful about arbitrary decision-making made on the decisions. But anyways, it's what you've got on the books, and if it's working, then that's great. And Dave was a good guy, Dave was a good guy. But, so I guess, well, if you have a conditional use permit. I'm going to use the example of a rock quarry, because I think I've seen Dave's requirements for conditional use permit for, for rock quarry. You have a number of standards about hours of operation and maybe some other, some operational standards, right?
Yes.
How far, and buffering, how far from that, okay. So let's say you got, let's say you got a hundred-foot buffer between the rock quarry and any, any room, and you chase it around. And you want to change that to a hundred and fifty. That's a text amendment, okay? And you do that as a legislative body, God is its way of a judicial judge, okay? And what does that mean? That means that you, if you're, if the change you make is a big challenge, okay? Where county commissioner agrees to the text amendment, somebody sues, I sued the county courts. As long as you had the authority to make the change, and you followed whatever procedures are set out in law in making that change, and you were fair and impartial, and there wasn't, wasn't bias involved in, in making the, making the change, you're pretty much home free. It doesn't matter whether the change from a hundred to two hundred feet, whatever it was, was reasonable or not, or was unreasonable. Doesn't matter, because the courts don't look at the wisdom of the change you made in the text, okay? And also, unlike, and we'll compare this to a rezoning procedure, where the information that is relevant to the case is, is, is defined. In the case of a text amendment, you can draw from your own life experiences. And you can, you can have ex parte, I don't want to encourage this, but you go out and do your own research on whether or not a hundred feet, two hundred feet, a hundred and fifty is the right distance for, for a setback, okay? You're not limited to what I tell you or what Tim tells you, okay? You could, you could, again, you could draw on your own experiences you've had. You could go to the library, you could go on the internet, and you could drive around and look at rock quarries and pace it off yourself. That's all okay, because you're legislators, just like state lawmakers can do it, just like congressmen can do that. You know, you're not limited to what happens in here, in this room, okay? Now, I started to say ex parte, you know, you still have an obligation to be fair and then biased. And anytime you gauge, we'll talk about this at the next meeting, but anytime you get, gauge an ex parte, you open the door to allegations that you're, that you're prejudiced, okay? But going out and doing internet research and saying, what's the proper buffer of setback for rock quarry? You know, that's fine, you're just being good legislators, okay? That is a real brief rundown of, of your legislative function. Is everybody straight on that? I mean, you look at any, anything in your ranks that has a number on it, you know? X feet, three feet, any kind of a listing, a list of conditional uses that Dave Yearout had. Sometimes they're just god-awful long, it's like you have a page that folds out to the floor, you know?
Well, what he did is he just said anything, you know, basically.
Okay.
That is commercial or industrial is basically what he said.
I'm sorry, I said Dave was a very sharp guy, very good public servant. He just disagreed on, on this one thing, okay? But, yeah, so at, at one time, he, he had a list, he used this, okay? Okay, well, you wouldn't have it, you won't, you're not going to have a text amendment that's related to uses then. So it really all becomes like density and dimensional standards.
Everything falls if it's not on the list, because he does have a list. But anything that doesn't fall on the list that says, anything staff interprets is this, this, and this, so.
I see that, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about.
Well, your opportunity to make legislative changes is somewhat limited in Dickinson County, but, but it's still, it's still out there. So what do you? So let's talk about, let's talk about the site-specific rezonings. This is page, pages fifteen through twenty-three, this is the last topic we're talking about tonight, which is important. This is your quasi-judicial function. And here we're talking about conditional use permits, granted, we'll talk, I said rezonings, just ignore that, and conditional use permit. By state law, same procedure as we follow if you had rezoning procedures in the county. And usually, those are basic procedures. Staff makes a presentation review, listing the golden factors that we're going to be talking about in a minute. I've come in, you know, as the applicant, I don't know what your sequence is necessarily, but you go first or whatever. But whichever way it is.
Yeah, they'll, they'll come in to see me and.
Well, hey, what's, what's this before these folks?
Oh, it's before them, okay, yeah. You, you mean if it's.
Well, what we do in Topeka is a stat, a staff presentation, runs through the staff report.
That's what we do, yeah.
And then you hear from the applicant, and I say, this is why my conditional, conditional use should be allowed.
Yeah, that's how we do it.
Yeah, and you ask some questions, and I try to answer them, you open it up for a public hearing, and whatever discussion occurs there, and then you'll come back to this procedure every day. But the short version, shorthand version of it is, you follow the public hearing, you close the public hearing, you have discussion, you take a vote, right? And then, whatever that mechanismation is, up or down, goes through the board of county commissioners. A lot of people think, if, if you guys sort it out, that's the end of the story. That's not the end of the story, it's a process, okay? Why is it quasi-judicial, why does the court say quasi-judicial? And that hasn't been the law since state law in Kansas, it's only been in the last, about fifty years now. The court says it's quasi-judicial because you've taken my piece of land. You're not dealing in categories of land like you are if you make a text amendment to the legislators. You're looking at my piece of ground, and you're applying the law to my piece of land and my application for that land, and that makes you judges, okay? And holds you to a higher standard. Again, it's a standard of reasonableness that you have to be, in order to have a legally, legally sound decision. But it's a critical precedent, you know, because it's site-specific. And it's got the label of quasi-judicial, and because it's quasi-judicial, judge like. You have to comply with both procedural due process of law and subsidy due process of law. I know I'm repeating a lot of stuff here, we all know what the procedural due process of law is. Again, you talk about notice, public hearing, fair and impartial decision-maker, a written order, a record of the proceedings. Procedural due process, subsidy due process. And over here on page fifteen in the handout, is, is the is the requirement of reasonableness, and in a nutshell, here to be reasonable, a decision has to be supported by the evidence that is in the record. I mean, not record that's out there somewhere, or you got ex parte, or something you did on your own, some conclusion you came to because of what you read on the internet, okay? If, if there's evidence like that, information like that, then it's to be shared and put in the record so people know what the basis for the decision was, okay? But when we're talking about record evidence, we're talking about what the staff presents to you, what I, as the applicant, present to you, what you hear from the members of the public. That's the record, okay? And that's what you, I think there is, the record evidence needs to support the decision that you made. That doesn't mean there can't be evidence going both ways, but there has to be record evidence that supports the decision you made. And sometimes the courts talk about substantial evidence, and that's mentioned in the, in the handout too, on page twenty-four. A little inconsistency there in the court, but. And here, you know, Jay just talked about, you know, hard, hard definition of what's reasonable, what the court referred to as what's not reasonable. And it's like that it's something that's arbitrary, you know, that's beyond the pale, and there's no basis for it, then that's an unreasonable decision, okay, so. Now, the good news is, is the same court decision that, that said that what you do with your conditional use permit are quasi-judicial in nature, the court set out some factors. Have you, have you heard of the golden factors? Heard that term, okay, it's, it's a prime honor, and it's a great name for it. Because, you know, it's golden factors, the court said, here are eight factors to take a look at. Are they incorporated into the?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So they're part of the staff report, you go factor A, B, C, D, whatever. So you've got eight, and you may have had more than that.
Yeah.
More than the eight?
Well, we, I have the standard eight, it's what Dave Yearout gave us for conditional use permit review.
Yeah.
And so it was eight.
So these are eight factors that, that the Supreme Court said that you should look at. Didn't say you have to, but said if you consider these eight factors, or each of the eight factors that apply in any given application, then, then you were on the road to making a reasonable decision, okay? So you take a look at those factors that are set out in the handout. Take a look at this real quickly. Look at the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood, you want to see where they are. I've lost my page just ten, where are they on the page?
Oh, seventeen, seventeen, number four.
Okay. Especially it's A through H, you know, A is the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood. C is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. It's the extent to which the removal of restrictions potentially affect their my property, length of time the property has remained vacant, and so relative gain to the public health, safety, welfare is always a very confusing one. Recommendations of professional staff, and conformance to the comprehensive plan. And you can talk about any of those in detail if you'd like. But again, it's not an exclusive list. And importantly, there will be on this. And I, and I don't know how you guys offer it on this, but those are the golden factors. You can add factors to a specific application for a CUP that you think is appropriate. There's nothing wrong that staff could suggest, you know, here's another factor you ought to take a look at. For you guys to come up with them on your own, as long as, as long as, as long as it passes muster as being reasonable.
Question for you. I, on my staff reports, will often break down where it talks about, is this compatible with the comprehensive plan? What I'll do is, I concentrate on the land use and economic development elements. My question to you is, how does this board weigh the economic use element of the comprehensive plan versus the land use?
Okay, well, this is going to, this is going to, it's going to confuse it, okay? So I'll, I'll apologize for it, it is going to be confusing. The Supreme Court of Kansas said, these are the factors that, that you ought to take a look at. And again, there might be other factors as well. What the court did not say is how much weight you have to give any of those factors, one to the other, okay? And it also didn't say that planning commissioners have to arrive at a consensus as to the weight to give any factor. It is, it is common, and it's fine, it's legal for you to put ninety percent of the importance on factor number five, and you put twenty percent of that same factor, in terms of weight, okay? And you put zero on it, or five, you put something, okay? I mean, yeah, you don't have to have a consensus, maybe you do, maybe you arrived at that in your deliberations. But bottom line is, when you come to time your decision, you don't have to all be on the same page as to how much weight a particular factor deserves on my application. And that's not, I mean, it sounds chaos, it's not chaos, it should have been, it should have been. If you have an informed discussion, thoughtful discussion, and you apply, you know, the history you've got, you know, what you've done in the past, precedent you have, what you hear from the public, what you hear from the applicant, and you test me out, you determine what the facts are, and you talk, you know, that's the critical thing, is to talk about, about the factors and see where you, where you are. But, but the bottom line is, you know, you can have six different opinions as to how much weight my application, or how much weight a factor, or the golden factors has for my application, okay? But you considered it, you take a look at it, and talk it over. And more often than not, things are going to turn out okay. But, you know, for, for the problems that I've seen, and I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, with the court not dictating to you what your option could be. I mean, it's, it's not a matter of punching numbers and coming up with a result. We're not to that point yet in this country, okay? So it's still, people making decisions. But how do you go through that process if I'm out here in the audience or I'm the applicant standing here and I hear your discussion? And I hear you say, well, let's talk about factor number three. And you'll say, yeah, well, that factor seems to be in favor of the applicant, you know, and that's good. And I go, okay, great. And you do that, if that's your process where you go through each of the applicant, each of the factors, and I keep in count here, and say, oh, there's eight factors. And I hear you talking, and say, well, it looks like I've got five of those, I'm home free. And then you turn around and turn me down, I go, you know, what's, what's going on? What happened here? And what happened was that, yeah, I prevailed on five of those factors in the course of your discussion. But the other three factors are so strong, so much weight. And maybe it was the recommendation of planning staff, maybe it was the compliance with the comprehensive plan. You know, I put, when I make my decisions, I put a lot of importance on what the comprehensive plan says, okay? It's not determinate, but I put, probably more often than not, I put more weight on that than other, other factors I'm looking at. So, you know, if I, if I'm keeping count as the applicant, or about, I'm out here in the audience, and I think, well, they just, they just turned me. and I think, well, they just turned me, turned down my application, great. And then you approve it, you know, I'm scratching my head. So the point of all that is, just be careful how you present that, how you make that discussion. If you make it look like it's a scorecard, then, you know, you might, you're gonna create expectations of people. But at the same time, it's important to have discussion about the factors that you think are important. And I'll also remind you that, you know, probably in most of the applications that you see, not every one of those factors is gonna be relevant, you know?
Yes.
Some will be, and on the face of it, some of them might be much more relevant, or much less relevant than others. And everybody would agree with that.
A lot of times when I do my staff reports and I break down those factors, what I'll do is, is I tend to base my recommendations off of the findings that I find for each one of those. And I usually let them, so like, if it's a situation where, if I run across, if it's split like four that I find are in support and four are not in support, I'll say, staff is unable to recommend approval. Doesn't mean that I'm saying I'm recommending denial. It just says I'm unable to recommend approval based on the findings.
Sure, have you had occasion where you recommend denial?
The only time is if there's a variance. So, yeah, I'll recommend denial. Now, I've not had to do that. But if there's, if there's an unreasonable variance, like if, you know, that's what I've always been told.
But on a conditional use permit, have you, but there could be circumstances where you would recommend denial? You could imagine it.
Well, I could, well, it's, like I say, I personally don't because the way that we, again, the way that our land use pattern is in Dickinson County, it's really hard just to say.
If I have a piece of ground that's right next to an elementary school, and I want to put a shooting range in it.
No, I would say no. I would say recommend, yeah. Yeah, but I'm not.
There is a line out there, okay? Well, let me tell you, you've used the word record, Dave. Let me mention something too, because this, I saw this recently in the city I work for. A planning commissioner, this is a city planning commissioner. He and I got into a little bit of a back and forth. He was making the point that his opinion was deserve equal consideration, equal weight of the planning director's opinion. And maybe on the face of it, and suddenly I call that odd, but what it essentially is saying is that, you use the word opinion, we said this way. The word opinion means different things to different people, but for a lot of people, it means a subjective determination of some sort. It's my opinion that the earth is round. It's my opinion that the sun will come up in the east tomorrow, okay? But, put it in an example, but it's my opinion, I'm gonna run out of time here tonight. But the planning staff, what the planner intends to do is a judgment or determination of findings based upon his knowledge of the law, the land use regulations, and the comprehensive plan, and applying that to my application, okay? If it's expressed as an opinion, this is just a touchy subject for me. If it's expressed as an opinion, what people in the audience here is that, you know, well, staff has placed this. You know, maybe it's somebody's brother-in-law, or somebody's neighbor, or something like that. I would urge you to avoid using the term opinion with respect to any staff recommendations. And I would urge you, I mean, it may seem like a minor point, but in staff reports, use the term judgment, determinations, findings, things like that, to show that it's, to take a step away from something that looks like it could be your subjective view. Because your job is to be objective, right? Okay, I mean, if anybody in the world, your job, you are expected to be more objective than anybody else because you've got, and you guys, you know, you're expected to be objective, but maybe sometimes a little of the subjectivity might work its way in around the edges, right? So if you want to talk about your opinions, that's fine, but not to staff. Does any of that make any sense, or you? I mean, it is a troubling, a troubling conversation that I had because it was essentially saying that the planning director, the planning staff in that city were just one more member of the planning commission, you know, and everybody had equal weight, you know? That everybody was dealing with an opinion. And the message, the real heart is the message that sends to people that are, or basically the applicants, right? Talk about the hearing procedure that you have. I wanted to mention just a couple more things about that. Page nineteen has a suggestion here, the procedure, Tim. You know, you, again, you make the presentation, you've got a written report that's provided to, is that part of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys have a chance to look at it ahead of time?
Oh, yeah, I sent it a week ahead. I sent it one week ahead of the meeting, so they could get it.
And you make a recommendation.
Yes.
You know, and non-recommendation is, well, you said that's all depends on various, that's really my expectation. And my example of the shooting range.
And nine times, nine times out of 10, when I say unable to recommend approval, even though I'm not saying I'm recommending denial, these guys pretty much know if staff is unable to recommend approval, there must be some reason why, so.
You've got a bit of confusion over, year out, conditional use permit. I mean, that's a protest period, protest petitions.
Yes.
I don't know how common that's been. It surprises folks that people that oppose the block rezoning of my shooting range that's to the elementary school, okay? Which, Tim has recommended denial, that's what I'm hearing anyway, and I'm arguing for it. And you have a public hearing, and you close the public hearing. At the time the public hearing closes, the 14-day period for protest starts running. Most people in the audience out there will think that that protest period doesn't begin until you make a decision. That's not what the law says. The law is very, very clear on this. You close the public hearing, the 14-day clock starts running. That means that you can take something under advisement. You can table something until your next meeting, 30 days later, okay? And I come back, you know, and, my gosh, now you, I find out you guys, now you've tabled it, and now you're taking it up the next month, and you prove it. You prove my application, and I go, I'm gonna protest. I'm on the lot. I'm on the lot. My protest, my opportunity to protest expires 16 days later, right? So you get that information, and I don't know how you do it, again, Tim. To me, it's important that the education of folks in what the protest petition rights are does not come from the planning commission, it comes from planning staff. Because if I'm sitting here and I'm asking for your approval of something, and you tabled it, and then you turn around and tell people in the audience, oh, by the way, you know, you have 14 days to protest Kat's application. You're sending them a message, right? Even if you're telling not to. So we have staff, and some, like you do, writing the agenda document. You just say, oh, by the way, per section whatever of year out's regulations, or state or state law, 14 days from the date.
The chairman, usually I've got like a list of things that I put together for the chairman to read off before the public hearing starts, so to kind of let the public know.
I would, I would put it over in a piece of paper. I would put it in a piece of paper so people could say, well, they know it. It's in writing right here. And if it comes from this, I thought, it's not a bad thing, okay? But it's a safer thing to do if it's on the agenda document, so.
Okay, I got you. I've been putting it on the, okay, that makes sense.
Use, no matter how you say it, it's gonna send them like, hey, if you don't like what Kat's proposing to do, you know, you better get your petition together. The other thing that gets people confused about protest petitions is, they think if you turn me down, that's the end of the story. And that's not it, because it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. And what the protest petition is, is not protesting what your action is, it's protesting my application, okay? And that's what the little note needs to say, it said if you oppose to the application, not, not saying if you're opposed to the planning commission's action, because I've had that come up numerous times. People think that they're protesting what you guys do, and that's not what the law provides, okay? Last thing, and one minute or got. When this goes from the, goes upstairs, what does the Board of County Commissioners do? Do they take any additional information?
Sometimes they'll request, you know, some, typically they don't. But, you know, I usually am pretty thorough with what I give them. It's whatever I've given the planning commission. There are times when they will, the county commissioners will ask the applicant some additional questions, and from that may come from, may have some additional information that they would see that, you know, but that these guys didn't. But again, it's a, that's rare.
Yeah, and that's not uncommon. It's best practices, one of my least favorite terms. Best practice, there's a language on page 20 that suggests, where you put in writing what the procedure is. And the emphasis is on, you know, if there's new information that's come about, or if the planning, if the Board of County Commissioners need more information, they send it back down to the planning commission to examine. Problem, the problem with doing it any other way is it starts, it can look like you're holding another public hearing for the benefit of maybe members of the public being able to speak.
Right.
I think it doesn't sound like it's a problem here, but it can be a problem. I come in, I think of an example here. I come in with a conditional use permit application where I actually, I actually misrepresent what I'm supposed to do in order to get you guys okay on it, okay? Then I go upstairs to the Board of County Commissioners, and I say, well, I've been rethinking my business plan a little bit, and here's a different use I'm gonna make, but it's still, it's related, you know? I've been increasing intensity of something, or what have you. And it's a difficult thing to imagine with the CUP approach that the county has, but I can put new information out, or the Board of County Commissioners can query me about some aspect of my plan that you guys didn't think of. And now it's new information. You didn't have it, Tim didn't have it, but the Board of County Commissioners have it. And members of the public that are watching my application, they don't have an opportunity to respond to it. But if you send it back to the planning, the board sends it back to the planning commission for the consideration of that issue, then you guys have the opportunity at your discretion to reopen a public hearing and allow these folks to weigh in on that matter. So, I don't know. We're out of time here. Where I'd like to pick up is a topic that you think I've already exhausted, but I haven't. And that's the one, the distinction between, I'm the applicant here, my rock quarry, my shooting range, I can see. It's that school here, I've got an incorporated community, it's here, and a bunch of homes right around. Actually, it's my old rock quarry I'm using as a shooting range, because they do that, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, rock quarries are a great, right? They're, they're future shooting ranges. So this is what I want to do, and you can't turn me down on the CUP, and it's, you know, right? It's gonna go forward. You're not, you're recommending denial, but.
Hope you got a lot of lack of insurance.
But here's the deal, you know, I have my personal interest in that, my private property rights. I say, this is my private property, and this is what I want to do with it. It's gonna be a commercial operation, and it's gonna be great, it'll be fun for everybody. And so that's my interest. Then you've got the immediate surroundings, which are a bunch of homes over here, and an elementary school here, you know, which you're trying to figure out what the hell they're gonna do, they're gonna board up their windows and whatever, to keep the, keep the wreckage coming over. But anyway, it's, kids off the school ground. But that's, I mean, it's a terrible example to use, and it really is, it's hard to admit, but it's traumatic. So you've got this neighboring concern, neighborhood concerns. And then you've got the larger public interest. And again, however you guys define that, whether it's every square meter of the county, or whether it's just, or whether it's just the unincorporated part of the county. And you wrestle, you've got to distinguish between those three in any given application. Better applications than what I'm suggesting here. I got a soybean field that I want to turn into a residential subdivision. It's gonna take your view away from you, okay? And you have legitimate concern as a neighbor. And the courts have said that, that your concern is worthy of some consideration. But it's not determinate, okay? It's not, because, again, you want the view by the land, okay? But you do have a concern, and we'll talk about some examples of how that concern can rise to the level of, or become a determinate, even though it's limited to the immediate area. But then the larger interest, in this example, of these 10 houses I've been building, that's 10 houses that the county needs, right? Page 138, the comprehensive plan says you need more housing. And I'm gonna make these houses affordable, okay? So there's a larger public interest, there's the neighborhood interest that Martin has, and my interest in wanting to, you know, I can't sell soybeans to China anymore, so I'm gonna, I'm going to build some houses on it, if I get number competitive. Yes, sir?
Here's what I struggle on making that decision, is I ask myself, what's it gonna cost the neighbors around that? Because when we have the hearing, it's everybody within a thousand feet. And I'll bring up one that I had no, nothing in, but also served as a treasure on township.
Can you say that, no one?
I wasn't on the planning board when they made the decision.
Yeah.
And it's one of these things where you say, hey, great, it's a comprehensive plan, let's go do it. And now, five years into it, and I'm treasurer on the township, and I'm asking myself, is that really a good deal? Because it's cost everybody else money. And I'll just throw the, I'll just describe briefly. Run down Homestead, somebody bought it, fixed it up, put a nice property in there, good family. Couple of years afterwards, they had kids, they decided they wanted to do an in-home daycare. I'm sure required conditional use is gonna be, they're gonna, perfectly reasonable. You know, they're gonna watch five kids, or seven kids, or whatever. Everybody says, fine, hey, great, go do it. And now, I'm seeing the bills on the township, and the first call was, hey, we need a little more rock on the road because prior to that rock road, that was a common approved road, that was gravel before, but there's probably two or three cars a day on it. Now, with five kids or whatever, you've got 10 or 15 cars, and it's halfway between the couple of the deals, so even though they're only three quarters of a mile from a paved road, it really affects about two miles of rock road. And we took the township budget up and everything, you get into one of these years, where you don't want to say, no, we've already put enough rock out. That's all the rock we're getting. And you know the road's getting in bad shape, the traffic's gone up. Can you come in as conditional use? Didn't see that, and I could see this coming up again. Got another area in township, kind of similar deal, that at the time set out, hey, it's a good idea. Now we're raising middle of you, we're spending more. And then you get the first phone calls that, hey, I need rock up my road. And I seen you just put some down there for about the third or fourth time. You know, we pay taxes too. Well, you hate to think, well, you didn't pay enough this year, but guess what? Next year, you're gonna get to pay enough. How do you balance that when you see things different around that? You know, how it will affect just people. it will affect just people within a thousand feet of it? How do you approach that as a planning commission, that quite large?
Yeah, a couple, a couple things, but I, sorry, I get my train of thought here. I thought you were going to talk about like the, the median surrounding area, like they could have looked at some, also property value or something because of the development, and that's, that's one issue, but, but you, you talk about the roads, the first thing that comes to mind is what cities struggle with all the time, and that is, okay, somebody wants to put development out here, and it's a half mile or a mile from the nearest sewer connection, and they'd really love to have this development happen, but it's an enormous cost to put the sewer line in, and we're going to oversize it, right? Because we want the intervening property to fill.
As long as it goes past.
Yeah, so you don't, you don't put a four inch line in, you put a twelve inch line in, right? And great cost, and the taxpayers are going to get burned on that, okay? So that's why you have a planned growth, sequential growth, and, and you don't approve that, you just turn that application down, talk about city, I mean, you turn down this application for subdivision here, because it's premature. You don't have the, you don't have land or existing infrastructure going to support it, so, so back some other time, or you could say, if you're willing to foot the bill a hundred percent of the cost from that infrastructure, then come on, you know, that'd be great. But, but that doesn't happen, so you just say, sorry, you know, we can't, public can't afford to do that. You talk about a road, you know, that's, that's now going to have to be, it's going to have increased costs, because you're going to have some more traffic volume, at least for a shorter period of time, but no expectation, no knowledge as to how long that's going to, how long that's going to be like that. And I, I, I think, I don't want to beat up here, conditional use for that approach, but, but that makes it more difficult.
Right.
To, to deal with.
Well, I guess my question is, is, okay, the next one that comes in, and I see that, everybody's all for it, it fits all the plans, and I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, my experience has been, no, that's going to go up in about three or four years, and all the neighbors are not going to be laughing about this, but they didn't even know it was going, it was even brought up, just for somebody else to bring the point up.
Well, one of the things that, that I, you know, to interject, we've got, you know, to your point, you're, you're still on the township.
Correct.
We're going to have township night on Monday, and this is one of the things I was actually going to talk about, was this kind of communication with, because I think part of it is because, I'm going to say current staff, not as much, but previous staff was, when it came to notification and working with the townships, a lot of times, were not very proactive when it came to conditional use permits. And so what I would do is, on township night on Monday, I'm just going to explain, you know, that, you know, that my intent is to try to foster a little better communication when this stuff comes up, to give the townships time to review this before it actually goes to the planning commission.
Well, and now, am I asking you guys, am I the word law on the planning commission? And I'll just start looking at whatever is before us as today, I'm thinking, all right, what's going to be like five and ten years down the road?
Well, let me give you a statistic that's kind of scary, you have to make some adjustments for Kansas, but there've been studies, people have studied this, smart people have studied this issue of, and of course, the breakpoint where developing residential property pays for itself, in terms of property taxes, say, equally the services received. And as you're talking about a rural area, these studies tend to be urban, but about five years ago, five years ago, the figure was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house, to, to property taxes, and this is, you know, broad, broad strokes here, but property taxes applied to a house of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be expected to pay for the municipal services that they received, four hundred and fifty thousand. Everything below that was being subsidized, okay? Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's five years ago, that figure's probably closer to six or seven hundred thousand now. And if they could justice for Pika, or for Kansas, Dickinson County, numbers will be lower, but the point is, any residential development that occurs, except for really high dollar stuff, is going to end up costing general taxpayers, but it does, you know, for services. The, the trade-off is the growth that you get, sales taxes and all of this stuff, you know, that's.
We're the county, we're the county, we don't get any.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, I know, I've done it.
So, I mean, that's. Is, is anybody else wrestled that one, planning commission, am I the one thinking?
Yeah.
Or, or the next time something similar comes up, you're on?
Well, taken, and, and Tim says he's going to bring it up at township day, and I think that's excellent, but the, part of it is, is the communication just has to be, because the county is actually approving the permit or the CUP, but it affects the township road, because it's not a.
Yeah.
County road, but there you go, what he's saying is, send the townships something that says, yep, I've talked to the applicant, and they understand, et cetera, et cetera. But then, on the other hand, what I've seen is, the township's got to be responsive when you get something from the county, because in one township, they responded to Tim, and he, it's great, and, and then another board member calls him on the township board and says, no.
No, this is a no-go, yeah, they say no, and I'd already approved the.
Yeah. But the county, I mean, one of the things you mentioned is, what happens five years later, I mean, if you were to turn it down, turn me down, I've got, I've got eight kids, okay? I've got, I've got two, you've got eight kids, and you're going to tell me, well, are your kids going to stay on the farm, or are they going to stay around here, or are they going to go off, go to college or go off? What difference does that make to you? What's that have to do with my application? You don't know if, if all eight are going to stay on the, on the, on the farm, or if none of them are, and, I mean, and you can't force the issue, you know? So you don't know if there's going to be eight, eight more cars traveling down that road, you know?
They say, you know, it's going to be a small, more than five kids, and then just living in the area and watching it, yeah, there's more traffic than I would have dreamed. And then it's, hey, you know, when it keeps raining, and roads get bad, well, we need to have more rock, we need to widen this part out, and then, you know, I'm sitting here as a treasurer at the end of the year, and we get another shot around the top of this was, and we need more rock, and we're going to use the budget up, because we didn't understand, and even if we did understand, we're saying, well, now we got up the rock, you can't go to them and say, hey.
Everything comes back to that rock quarry, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. But as, as being on the planning commission, another similar deal, or maybe not similar, or anything out in the country, I guess, maybe I'm more protective, because even though that's great, it provides a benefit, I've also seen firsthand of the downside, you know, to the retired couple, you know, running out to farm ground, letting it out, it seems like every time we turn around, the property taxes just up, 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 up.
Well, you have, you only have language in your comprehensive plan, and you key on to say, yeah, we're in favor of more, we need more housing, we want more housing, we want more population, but the infrastructure's not here to support this kind of a development, whether it's a single house, which is a little bit harder to do here, but by subdivision, you could say, even though I've got room for seppics, and ground perks and everything that's on a rock road, and it's got a bridge here that, eh, probably going to need replacing for a while, and how's that bridge going to hold up with all the construction coming in to build the houses? But those are relevant considerations, and you can say that, that development of that, of that, by subdivision of that location, is just not consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's premature development, and you're not going to approve it. And that, I put you all in a hard spot, because you want population, I want to build some houses, you need houses, and you're telling me no. But, but you are also telling me that you'll find a spot near Abilene, or, or Sullivan, or someplace, find some land and build your houses there.
We, our regulations currently, I'm assuming that the, you're talking about the, a, a, a childcare center that has five kids, correct?
Yeah, and that's just kind of, I've kind of watched from the ownership, but I've kind of, we've had three or four things come up, and I'm thinking, boy, it meets all the goal of the rule, everything, it's a good deal, but does everybody else around know that what's, what's going, what's going to happen?
And what, what I would, what we currently have in our zoning regs, the reason I say that is because when you mentioned about traffic increase, one of the things that I did with the previous county engineer that was with us, is I sat down with him, and we figured out when a traffic study would be called on, you know, for a, a use, and we, what we figured was, the way that the zoning regulations are written now, if you read, if you read them, it's two parking spaces for every single family home, is what they figure. So you're figuring two cars going in and out twice a day, whatever, to that one residence. And so if you're talking about a business, then it may be one of those things that we may want to look at probably requiring, because if they're going up, you're, you're talking about, even though it's not, they aren't living there, they're just picking up and dropping off.
Going up, picking up, dropping off.
That's an increase on the, on, on the traffic, and it's possible that's something we may want to look at requiring a new traffic study on the part of the applicant to do, you know, before they do something like that, you know? And I know a lot of times, the, you know, I mean, it's just a thought, because it's commercial use technically, when you start getting into the, the nuts and bolts of it.
Well, if, if nothing else, it provides you the factual information.
Yes.
For a decision, so that's, if, if the traffic study shows.
Then it's going to be.
That boldness of sense.
Yeah.
If they make a calculation as to what the cost is per vehicle mile, you know, over, over a period of one, five years, or something like that, and you find out, well, the increased traffic load is going to cost the county or the township, you know, fifty thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, something like that, then that's information we have.
Yep. So it's just a thought, you know, and that's probably what I'll bring up to with Monday night.
Some cities have tried road impact fees. Cities in Johnson County have that, I, it hasn't really caught on too much around the state, and I don't know of any county that does a road impact fee.
No.
But it's, you know, trying to.
Well, that's a small, a small example of what I'm struggling with on the, on the judicial thing, is that, boy, everything looks good, and I see, I see problems on down the road, or an impact greater than what's presented here today, because I've seen something very similar happen over here.
I'm going to think of all the county roads, I'm going to the county roads back to my home counties, for the county, when I go back there, and I realize that there's probably not been a vehicle go in that road, on a stretch of road, go that, you know, that's, it's like it's probably nicely maintained, and it's rock, and all that, you know?
It's got to be, how else would a, how else would FedEx and UPS bring all the Amazon packages?
Well, you guys are awfully patient, and all that. Starting place, we're going to take back heat in front of you, and I'm trying to get a little, uh, concise next time.
Thank you.
Go ahead and tell them.
I think so.
I don't know, okay, I was getting.
Totally. No, no, no. No business, no miscellaneous, they're motion to the air.
Also lose.
Second. We move to the second, the meeting, long finger, bring your hand, long finger, all those same sides.
I think you should have to grab a paper.
Thank you, Jim.
Sorry, Jim.